How's everybody doing today? Good, good, good. We have a quorum, we're gonna get started. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Wilford H. Speaks of Celestial Word of Ministry. He is here today as a guest of Councilman Greenly. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Let us pray. Wise and loving one, bless our agenda to be fruitful and for the common good, fulfilling our calling of the people that we serve. Thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and a measure of health. Grant our city officials, council members, and those assembled here to have ears to listen to one another, and the people they serve with wisdom to act on our behalf. Graciously grant them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicts, interests, and issues of our times, and a sense of welfare and true need of our people. I pray for this agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what will be pleasing to you and what will benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Philadelphia. It is in your most blessed name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor for those inspiring words, council will be at ease. Thank you very much. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 20th, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Sorry, thank you Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 20th, 2018 be approved.
Thank you, this has been moved properly. Second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 20th, 2018 stand to approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilwoman Gimm and Councilman Heenan.
Chair thanks the gentlemen, leave shall be granted. Chair now recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
Chair thanks the gentlemen. At this time, I will take a moment to thank everyone for taking time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for being here today. This time, when the Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger, who will present a resolution recognizing Second Lieutenant John Edward James Jr. in the Museum of the American Revolution. Would the Second Lieutenant John Edward James Jr. and those accompanying him please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Taubenberger, we have Councilman Greenly, Councilman Jones, Councilman Green, and Councilman O. And Councilman Johnson. And Councilwoman Bass. And Councilwoman Lina Reynolds Brown, and also Councilwoman Blackwell.
Mr. President, thank you very much. As a city councilman, I get to see a lot of things and get to meet a lot of people. But nothing has moved me so much as what I witnessed over the summer in Lieutenant, becoming Lieutenant James Jr., becoming a Second Lieutenant. This is a wrong that was righted, but it took about 75 years. The Army was segregated, most, everyone knows that, that was wrong. Today, it is a diverse group that is the pride of this country, showing every aspect and every ethnicity that the United States has. Because what collects us as Americans is not a race, or group, or religion, or anything like that, it's an idea for freedom. And Lieutenant James serves that. It also motivated me because it was the last act of World War II that you could possibly see, someone getting a promotion, 75 years that they should have gotten it before. What also motivates me, and people know that I like history, my ancestors, my mom and dad, come from Germany. Lieutenant James and people like him, men and women, brave men and women liberated my ancestral homeland. Today, Germany stands as a great democracy allied with other democracies, working out the problems of the world. And what is very interesting, this is very ironic, and I'm a little off script, but it's, maybe it's the Lord working. We have a group of students from Frankfurt, Germany, here today, because Frankfurt, Germany is our sister city. And I would like to ask those students to stand and be recognized as well, because this fits in very well. Ein herzliches Willkommen zur Stadt Philadelphia. And sie sind hier in historischen Zeiten. You're here in historic times, because what you're about to see and see a man be honored for help liberating, bringing a democracy to Germany. And because of that democracy, we have a great relationship between Philadelphia and Frankfurt. A resolution honoring and recognizing Second Lieutenant John Edward James Jr. for his service during World War II, and recognizing the Museum of the American Revolution Chairman and Acting CEO General John Jumper for righting the wrongs of the past and helping to commission Private John Edwards James to Second Lieutenant. And as a person, I was honored to be in that room at that moment. Whereas, Edward James Jr. was born in Johnstown, Pennsylvania.
Whereas, Mr. James began serving in the United States Army at the age of 21 in 1941 as a private, bravely serving in a total of five overseas campaigns and serving his country with distinction and grace, and...
Whereas, throughout Mr. James' service in the U.S. Army, he received a total of five war medals, including a Good Conduct Medal, American Defense Service Medal, American Campaign Medal, a World War II Victory Medal, and a European African Middle Eastern Campaign Medal, and...
Whereas, in 1942, Mr. James completed his officer candidate training at the Infantry School at Fort Benning, only one of 21 out of 200. Mr. James should have been commissioned as a Second Lieutenant and assigned to the 142nd Quartermaster Battalion, and...
Whereas, his commission as a Second Lieutenant in the 242nd Quartermaster Battalion would have put him in charge of white officers, leading to his commission being denied, with Mr. James remaining a private. Whereas, after his family pursued the issue for years, the Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Army official declared that the Army would approve Mr. James' commission on March 2018, and...
Whereas, to honor this momentous occasion, the Museum of the American Revolution, with its Board Chair and Acting CEO General John Jumper, decided to hold the commissioning ceremony at the museum to celebrate the event and to help right the wrongs of the past, and...
Whereas, Mr. James comes from a family of patriots. His great-great-great-grandfather served during the American Revolutionary War as a sergeant in the Continental Army and was at the Valley Forge Encampment in 1777 through 1778, and...
Whereas, another relative during the American Revolutionary War was a farmer and provided supplies to the Continental Army. Lastly, another relative served during World War, served during the War of 1812 as a private in the 2nd Regiment of Bollwies, Virginia Militia, fighting to maintain America's freedom. And his grandfather served in the 1st U.S. Colored Infantry during the Civil War, and...
Whereas, helping to right the wrongs of the past and honoring our veterans are a few of the things we can do as a legislative body.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia to hereby congratulate Second Lieutenant John Edward James Jr. for his recent commission and thanking him for his service during World War II, as well as thanking General John Jumper and the Museum of the American Revolution for hosting the commission.
Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Second Lieutenant John Edward James Jr. as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition. Congratulations.
We would like to extend sincere gratitude to the Councilmen and to this body for this recognition. My father is very proud to be an American, because only in this country can injustice be rectified. Now, the wheels of God may grind slowly, but they grind exceedingly fine. Thank you very much. For those who may not know, he turned 98 in June.
We're gonna take some pictures. We're gonna take some pictures in the front.
Thank you very much. Thank you. A true American hero. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution for Philadelphia Minority Business Enterprise Week. Would Iola Harper and those accompanying her please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilman Squilla, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Green, and Councilwoman Blackwell. And Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez and Councilman Johnson.
Are we all included? Because that's what it's about today and during Med Week, being all included. That's what America should look like, and that's what the Minority Enterprise Development Week tries to emphasize and ensure. I want to thank Iola Harper, Deputy Commerce Director, leading the Office of Economic Opportunity, Alice Dungy James and her staff for keeping the torch of Med Week alive for 34 years. That's a clap. I want to emphasize that this is important at the federal and at the state and here in these chambers at the local level. At the state level, I'm gonna have to give them their proper, because in 1955, a survey went out to small businesses in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and on that survey, it included a question, "Would you hire a Negro?" Surprisingly, that survey came back overwhelming majority said no. So in the following, so in the following year, Pennsylvania Act in 1955, PL 744, created the Human Relations Commission. It dealt with housing discrimination and employment discrimination, and now economic discrimination by way of economic inclusion. Here in Philadelphia, it was the late, great Lucian Blackwell who put forth Chapter 17500 in this body. It was passed and then signed by Wilson Good, who was the mayor, and put into our law. I want you to know that the people you see here continue that legacy, continue that fight. A guy by the name of Bilal Kayoum was the first chairman of the local Med Week celebration. And you might think that that would be an easy thing. You might think that that would be a no-brainer. But at the time, you're talking about systems that were put in place to keep the status quo as it was. Less than one-half of 1% of Philadelphia's procurement went to women and minorities. Less than one-half of 1% in a city of the first class, the size of Philadelphia, went to women and minorities. And thus, the struggle started and is continuing. Today, we've made great strides, but we still have a long way to go. You see, the "No Negro Allowed" signs are no longer there. But if you can't afford it, you can't have it, signs still continue. And by leveling the playing field, by creating as it was a middle class, an upper-middle class that showed a highway out of extreme poverty and poverty is the way to make long-lasting change. So therefore, it is appropriate that we support the National Minority Business Development Agency recognizing October 1st through October 5th, 2018 as the Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Week and provides critical information, resources, and opportunities, and inspiration to minority and female businesses in the city of Philadelphia.
And whereas, since 1983, the United States President has proclaimed a National Minority Enterprise Development Week, observance to recognize the outstanding achievements of minority business enterprises, also known as MBEs, and to honor those corporations and financial institutions that support minority business development. Annual regional conferences and activities are organized by the United States Department of Commerce Minority Business Development Agency in collaboration with the U.S. Small Business Administration and the Office of Government Contracting and Business Development, and...
Whereas, the Med Week celebration was started locally, as Councilman Jones said, in Philadelphia in 1984 to honor and promote minority-owned businesses in the Philadelphia area. The organizers of the first Med Week were Barbara Daniel Cox, former Director of Mayor Wilson Good's Women's Commission, and Bilal Abdul-Kayoum, as he has just said, then Deputy Director of the City Commerce Department, and...
Whereas, the 34th anniversary of Philadelphia Med Week is sponsored by corporations, local colleges, universities, and hospitals, local and regional government agencies and organizations that are committed to supporting opportunities for minority businesses, including co-chairs, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the Asian-American Chamber of Commerce of Greater Philadelphia, Greater Philadelphia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the City of Philadelphia Commerce Department, and the MBDA Business Center of Pennsylvania, and...
Whereas, it is during Med Week that the City of Philadelphia also recognizes the critical role of OEO officers in assisting the departments in meeting their broad responsibilities for developing policies, programs, practices, and strategies to achieve its goals regarding MWD, SBE, participation on city contracts, and...
Whereas, small businesses in Philadelphia and across the country are the cornerstone of economic growth, creating two-thirds of the net new jobs in the country and comprising 50% of America's employment, and...
Whereas, the sources of capital, technical resources, and contracting opportunities are essential to the development, growth, and prosperity of minority businesses. And Med Week will host some of the most prominent contracting organizations and resource providers that stand for the success of small businesses in the community, and...
Whereas, Philadelphia Med Week has grown exponentially since its inception, and this year includes over 40 sponsors offering more than 30 workshops, seminars, and networking opportunities across the region, including the City of Philadelphia Open for Business Expo, Minority Venture Capital Forum, Launch Your Digital Marketing Strategy, Doing Business with the Philadelphia Gas Company, Philadelphia Airport 2018 Annual Business Opportunity Forum, and Lighting the Torch, and many, many more. Now for be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby supports the National Minority Business Development Agency and recognizes October 1st through October 5th, 2018 as Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Med Week, which provides critical information, resources, opportunities, and inspiration to the minority business community. Further resolved, that this engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Philadelphia Med Week Committee as evidence of the strong support and sincere sentiments of this legislative body.
Thank you, and the Chair recognizes Ms. Harper for remarks.
Good morning. I am thrilled to accept this proclamation on behalf of all of these people standing behind me and others who were not able to make it today. For us, this is the most wonderful time of year. It is the time that we celebrate thousands of minority, women, and disabled-owned firms who power the economic growth of the city. This year's theme is elevate equity, with the goal being to intentionally correct and be... begin to balance the flow of economic opportunity and information to hundreds of diverse businesses across the city who stand ready to provide outstanding competitive goods and services. The thirty-plus events planned for Med Week have been specifically and intentionally designed to position diverse businesses in the city to easily access decision-makers, opportunities, and information that are not always readily accessible. And as you peruse the program for the week, you will see that agencies like the School District, SEPTA, Housing Authority, City Council, over seventeen city departments, U.S. Department of Transportation, Airport, PIDC, Pierce College, Temple, Drexel, Penn, CCP, PA Turnpike Commission, Energy Authority, and over twenty economic development and lending agencies across the city have all stepped up to say that they have opportunity, information, and resources for our diverse businesses in the city. For OEO, every week is Minority Enterprise Development Week, and I would like to sincerely thank every staff member of OEO, many of whom are standing up here with me today. Every single day, they work on elevating equity, along with and on behalf of the 2,957 diverse businesses that have elected to become part of the OEO registry. I want to thank all of our event co-chairs and Med Week partners because they too help remove barriers and create opportunities that help minority-owned firms create jobs, increase their capacity, and experience the sustainable growth that will make them significant contributors to the economic health of the city. And finally, I want to thank the members of City Council for recognizing the importance of this week. I invite you all to join us for the official Med Week kickoff scheduled for Monday, October 1st, where we will honor Marla Hamilton, Vice President of PIDC, and as the 2018 OEO Champion, and Councilman Curtis Jones Jr. as the 2018 Advocate of the Year. So I hope to see you all with us next week. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have one more presentation. Thank you very much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, who will present a resolution recognizing La Chapoe Project with Steve Gargula. And those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilman Johnson, Councilman O., and Councilman Greenlee, and Councilman Dom, and Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And Councilman Green.
It's no secret that I love the arts. I love more the performing and theater arts because of the movement it provides. The fine arts require you to be able to create amazing images with your hands. And so, while I can't do anything in the fine arts category, not anything, I have an amazing appreciation for those who've been gifted with the ability to take an intangible image in their head and reveal it on canvas for us all to enjoy. And with that, I'm recognizing La Chapoe Project and its artists on the occasion of their one-day art gallery showcasing international artists and challenging the negative narrative surrounding immigrants and individuals from Africa, Asia, and the Americas. Whereas, in January 2018, let's do a rewind, during a conversation in the Oval Office concerning immigration policy, President Trump balked at the prospect of allowing immigrants from some majority non-white nations to enter the United States, allegedly describing them as countries. The White House did not deny the veracity of the reports.
Whereas, the founders of La Chapoe Project, currently living in Morocco and Mexico, were among those who listened to the President's comments with dismay. The organization La Chapoe Project was formally established in 2018 to democratize engagement with art, curating one-day-only art galleries around the world. La Chapoe Project showcases contemporary artists from around the globe who would not be presented in typical galleries. After the President's remarks, they chose to use their first exhibit to challenge this negative characterization of non-white countries. Thus, the art exhibit was conceived, named after President Trump's now notorious remarks.
Whereas, the exhibit is a one-day art gallery showcasing artists hailing from at least fifteen countries, including Haiti, Mauritius, Mexico, Morocco, Rwanda, and Tunisia, as well as art from local Philadelphians. The exhibit will allow audience members to explore art from countries demeaned by President Trump like never before. Hear, hear.
Whereas, the art exhibit will be experiential and feature many different types of media, including sculpture, paintings, performances, photography, and video. One room of the exhibit will be entirely dedicated to the life and work of renowned Tunisian documentary photographer Sophia Barraquet, who passed away in July 2018.
Whereas, La Chapoe Project chose to hold the exhibition in Philadelphia as it is the city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness, as well as the first capital of the United States and the only UNESCO World Heritage City in the United States. People look to Philadelphia as representing American values, making the city the perfect place for the people to reaffirm that they will not stand for racism or xenophobia.
Whereas, the art exhibit is further made possible by the generous participation of its diverse and talented roster of artists, including, I will say the first names so that I don't mess up their last, Wondulu from Rwanda, Bruno from Uganda, Ruth from Mexico, Dina from Morocco, Sariah from Mauritius, Amy from Tunisia, Marymi from Morocco, Mara from Kenya, Saleem from Algeria, Lorena from Mexico, Danielle from the United States, Sanib from Morocco, William from the United States, Fatima from Algeria, Seif from Tunisia, Vanny from Cambodia, Doris from Brazil, Murad from Tunisia, and Jason from Haiti.
Whereas, the art exhibit will be on display at the Adrian Theater in Philadelphia on September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The gallery will be open to the public. No invitation is required and all invited to come as they are. Now forth be it...
I'll repeat, the gallery will be open to the public, no invitation is required, and all are invited to come and support these artists. Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes the La Chapoe Project and its founders on the occasion of their one-day art gallery showcasing international artists and challenging the negative narrative surrounding individuals from Africa, Asia, and the Americas. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to these artists as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Thank you for your craft. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Gargula for remarks.
All right. This word, shitholes, I said it, captivated the world for a week in January, and it's absurd to think that someone would characterize nationalities, entire countries, entire populations in such a way. And so, of course, it was all the news headlines, it was protests, but instead of just complaining about it and making another Facebook post or meme about it, we decided, hey, there's an opportunity to do something about it and put together this art exhibition. So, La Chapoe Project, you can say it with me, that's a fun word, Chapoe. So Chapoe means hats in French, and it's often used as an expression of saying kind of hats off. And so, this is our opportunity to say hats off to these remarkable artists. So you heard the diversity of the countries that these artists come from. The type of art that's going to be on display tomorrow includes photography, painting, sculpture. There's performance art from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. as well, so there'll be some live dancing and poetry, all kinds of really great things. So that'll all be on display tomorrow, Adrian Theater, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Three of the artists who are local were able to join us here today, and so they're just going to share a little bit about them. I want to also just say a thank you to Samantha Pearson for suiting this process with the City Council. So, thank you.
Hello, the guys pushed me here first. Good morning, I'm Daoudi Snogida-Dash Rogers. I moved to Philadelphia in 78, so I can tell you very briefly what, as a holder does, from '79 through '99, I was a volunteer and worked for the wonderful organization Talia Puerto Ricano in North Philadelphia. I also worked as a teaching artist for the Museum of Art from '92 through '99, also an artist in residency for a great brandy wine workshop in archives right down the street. And I even got an award under Mayor Wilson Good as a Volunteer of the Year. And alongside with my work, which is mixed media on paper and prints, I always worked, since Philadelphia became my second home, from Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, worked with minorities in communities as an artist in residency. I shared my art, as a tool, with kids, thousands of children in Philadelphia, also Camden, and that's what I do as a holder artist.
My name is Vanny Chanel, Cambodian descent. My parents are Cambodian refugees, and I was born and raised in Long Beach, California. So my whole life, you know, people told me because I was poor, because I was on welfare, that I wasn't going to amount to nothing. With my work, that I'm trying to say that I'm more than that, I'm capable of more than that. What I'm trying to do with my work is, I want to say that everybody here is capable of something great, something amazing, and don't let nobody tell you anything different from that.
Good morning, my name is William Wallace. I'm a painter coming out of West Philly. These are actually all my pieces right here. I'm currently working as a teaching artist through the Eastern State Penitentiary Historical Site. I'm going to be in SCI Chester later today, teaching a storytelling and animation course to incarcerated inmates, trying to get the stories from inside outside so we can really address our prison system. I guess, as an artist, I've been in Philly for about six years, and as an artist moving from city to city is something that tends to follow you around, which is, as you move somewhere and you try to build your practice in a neighborhood, you frequently find yourself being priced out of your own neighborhood. So I would like to address kind of the relationship between art and gentrification, and how do we, how do we break down this process so we can address issues in our communities without economically destabilizing our communities? But that aside, please come to the show.
And just last thing I want to share, there's some really great work happening right here in Philadelphia and in Pennsylvania. So tomorrow's exhibition, we're going to be accepting donations to support PIC, the Pennsylvania Immigration and Citizenship Coalition, as well as HUNTOS, who work right here in this community to support immigrants, to support refugees, and to support these big problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bides. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is communications, and the chair requested the sergeant of arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia pursuant to sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Road Charter, and today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 171054, 180504, 180515, and 180645. And I am pleased to advise you that on September 20, 2018, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on September 20, 2018, bill number 180600A. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 128 Mel Vale Street. And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 282 and 291 by relocating the southwesterly house line of Cotman Avenue from State Road to a point northwestwardly therefrom, a variable distance southwestwardly, and relocating the northwesterly house line of State Road from Cotman Avenue to a point southwestwardly therefrom, a variable distance northwestwardly, thereby widening said Cotman Avenue and said State Road. And an ordinance authorizing this striking from city plan number 119 and abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes located along the westerly side of 10th Street, north of Poplar Street, and extending westwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 195 by striking from the city plan Amber Street from Lehigh Avenue to a point northeastwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 196 by striking from the city plan Trenton Avenue from Clearfield Street to Allegheny Avenue. And an ordinance amending section 171305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Compensation Required to Be Paid to Employees to revise the compensation required to be provided in connection with application of the Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage Standard, and amending section 192604 of the Code entitled Tax Rates, Credits, and Alternative Tax Computation to make the wage rates related to the tax credit for new job creation consistent with section 171305, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications in your possession?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'm introducing two resolutions today, and I'd like to put up the flag that says we're going to reignite the debate around lead, since still too many of our children are being poisoned by lead. This resolution was co-sponsored by Jones, Dom Toltenberger, Greenlee, Parker Blackwell, Green, Squilla, Sanchez, Johnson, Bass, and O. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Aging to hold public hearings to examine emergency protocols that ensure the safety of senior citizens residing in traditional community high-rises.
And that will be on today's calendar?
And a non-privilege resolution urging the federal government to strengthen standards used to analyze dust-led hazards and lead exposure to children.
And that will be on today's calendar. Next week, I'm sorry, that's next week. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills on your behalf and one resolution on behalf of Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Capitol Street and Brown Street, North Street and 17th Street, 29th Street and Master Street, Taoga Street and Germantown Avenue, 4th Street and Fairmount Avenue.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance authorizing this striking from city plan number 119 and abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes located along the westerly side of 10th Street, north of Poplar Street, and extending westwardly therefrom.
Verdict committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing October 2018 as manufacturing month and further honoring Weber Display and Packaging for their more than 120 years of dedication to the manufacturing industry in the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce two resolutions, one privileged, one non-privileged, and I'd like to speak to those resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Crystal Tan, Amen Brown, Carl Hairston, Gail Young, Lisette Gonzalez, and Felicia Miller for springing to the aid of hundreds of senior citizens by providing food, water, and emergency assistance during the Pavilion Apartments' power outage on September 14, 2018.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution calling on Sheriff Joel Williams and the First Judicial District of Pennsylvania to impose a moratorium on residential property foreclosure sales until city council has the opportunity to hold public hearings regarding recently obtained data which suggests troubling trends in already struggling areas of the city.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. In 2004, our former colleague, Councilwoman Tasco, due to predatory lending, due to signals and complaints from her constituents, decided to call for a moratorium on sheriff sales. In that tradition, in 2008, we had our second moratorium on sheriff sales introduced by me, passed by this body. We stopped sheriff sales, and we were reminded that we had no authority over the sheriff's department. We were reminded that we had no authority over the courts, but we reminded them that we have authority over their budgets. What we talked about that time was stopping it for a time because at that moment, the largest number of sheriff sales in the history of the city of Philadelphia had occurred. We pumped the brakes, stopped it, forced advocates, banks, consumers to sit at their table, and as a result of it, created the mortgage diversion program, which since that time has saved over 12,000 homes. Again, Mr. President, the time has come for us to pump the brakes, take a look again, because as we start to look at data that suggests that we are back at that time, these sheriff sales, not solely, not of their own doing alone, have to be reviewed in concert with tax abatements, with sheriff sales, with deep poverty in some of these communities where people are having problems making ends meet. In addition, things like tangled titles and other things create barriers for us to give them assistance. So, we need to take a look at this, and not forever, but a look at this, to see if we can't adjust the dials a little bit to help citizens. Because, yes, we're in a booming economy, but progress isn't forward for all people, and it's time to take a look again with a moratorium on sheriff sales. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings examining the feasibility of expanding the services of the Community Life Improvement Program and establishing clip offices citywide.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings regarding the operation of Philadelphia's 311 Non-Eemergency Hotline.
And this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. It's only fitting that today, this week, as we celebrate Puerto Rican Week, I'm presenting this privileged resolution sponsored by all members of council on behalf of or recognizing the Honorable Nelson Diaz, who's just released a book, or will be releasing a book next week, Ni de Aqui Ni de Allá, No Either From Here Nor From There. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution congratulating Nelson Diaz on the release of his new book entitled Not From Here, Not From There, No Soy De Aqui Ni De Allá, The Autobiography of Nelson Diaz, and recognizing Nelson for his continued contributions to the Philadelphia community.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I do not have any resolutions or bills today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring and congratulating the honorees of the 2018 Stellar Startups Competition.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Toltenberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I have six bills, one on behalf of Councilman Heenan, and I'd like to be recognized after the 21st Century legislation.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 282 and 291 by relocating the southwesterly house line of Cotman Avenue from State Road to a point northwestwardly therefrom.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance amending section 14904 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Accessory Sign Controls to provide for sign controls in the area bounded by Market Street, 11th Street, Chestnut Street, and 12th Street.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 195 by striking from the city plan Amber Street from Lehigh Avenue to a point northeastwardly therefrom.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Wharton Street, 11th Street, Reed Street, and 12th Street.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 196 by striking from the city plan Trenton Avenue from Clearfield Street to Allegheny Avenue.
Verdict committee.
And an ordinance amending section 171305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Compensation Required to Be Paid to Employees to revise the compensation required to be provided in connection with application of the Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage Standard and amending section 192604 of the Code entitled Tax Rates, Credits, and Alternative Tax Computation to make the wage rates related to the tax credit for new job creation consistent with section 171305.
And chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank a lot of people for the last bill introduced here. It's important, as we look to move the needle to end poverty, that we collaborate together and work together. I want to first thank Councilman Good for the initial introduction for the 21st Century Ways legislation, and much appreciated. Also, working with the administration, the mayor's office, especially Deputy Mayor Labor Rich Laser, and Power, Reverend Holston and his team, for really being persistent on this and working with everybody. This bill, as introduces administration bill that I'm introducing, but it's also co-sponsored by Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Blackwell, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Ginn, and Councilman Green. So, this just shows you what could happen when people do work together. We appreciate everyone's support, and again, thanking Power for their diligence in making this come forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I'm sorry, I just had to check. I thought I signed it also, but it's okay. Councilman, you're good? You're good? All right. Okay, okay. Thank you. That bill will be referred to committee. Good. And chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I offer no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. And our next order of business is reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez for report from the Committee on Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Appropriations, to which is referred bill number 180739 entitled, an ordinance amending chapter 211600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Housing Trust Fund to authorize the establishment of separate sub-funds to receive respectively revenues attributable to recording fees and revenues from sources other than recording fees, to provide for and authorize the manner in which such revenues may be appropriated and spent, and to designate the agency within city government responsible for administering the Housing Trust Fund. And bill number 180740 entitled, an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for Other Grants, to the General Fund, the Director of Finance, and the Housing Trust Fund, the Department of Planning and Development. And bill number 180744 entitled, an ordinance providing for recurring funding to support equitable neighborhood development by preserving middle neighborhoods, constructing affordable housing units available for sale or rent, providing assistance to Philadelphians who desire to become homeowners, and directing council to appropriate revenues for said purposes to the Department of Planning and Development, Division of Housing and Community Development. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of bill numbers 180739, 180740, 180744.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 180739, 180740, 180744. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 180- Numbers 180832, 180295AA, 180498AA, 170678AA, and 160151. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned all the cosponsors on there, and I skipped the first one, which is our Council President Clark, who cosponsored the 21st Century Wage. And I really want to appreciate that and his leadership on this, and also that Philadelphia being able to lead by example is so important to be able to show the folks, not only in the city, but throughout the Commonwealth, that Philadelphia is taking a lead on ending, hopefully, ending poverty. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Can keep up that great work, sir. Before considering the resolutions and bills, we will consider our public comment session. Our public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or a resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you haven't already done so, you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium, a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we would ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you so much for your anticipated cooperation. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please call the first name.
Joe Denahell, commenting on 180347A and 180351A.
Good morning. This is the official decree on red man damage quo warrant on as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, Council, Mayor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably illegally. Council did not celebrate the birth of the U.S. Constitution and should be ashamed. This government refuses to get consent of the government to act, stealing homes and other private property without due process, as recently noted in federal court. Yet Council, Mayor, Governor, Senator, and others continue to wage war on constituents. Attorney General would rather go after the Pope than to prosecute this Rico-style conspiracy to deny rights. Oath violating officials must be prosecuted. If committing one crime one time would send normal people to jail, then why are oath violating public servants not prosecuted? Fourteenth Amendment, nor shall the people be deprived of life, liberty, or property, nor deny any person equal protection of the law. How then were most compensated by a have been repeatedly denied by God-given rights? The Constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, eighteen USC 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article One, Sections 1 through 11, twenty-sixth PA CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, seven twelve, seven thirteen, seven sixteen, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, fourteen one three three oh, fourteen four oh five six appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, the denial of God-given forty-two USC 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, and laws be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind Counsel, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Maysha Ngoza.
Good afternoon. I'm Maysha Ngoza, retired educator and university administrator. I'm speaking on Resolution 180832, the renaming of the street after Patty Jackson, who I love. I just want to ask Councilperson Kenyatta, and I'm originally from South Philly, did you make your community aware that you were renaming the street? Did the people on the block, and I love Patty, I have nothing against it, I'm just asking about the process? Because I live in a community where a street was renamed, and there was no process and no notification of community people by Councilman Jones. And we were told that he did not have to notify us for renaming. The policy says that you do not have to notify the community. So we would like to put a petition, and that policy needs to be changed, especially if you name something after such a controversial figure. I walk past that street every day and walk my dog. And if I had known, and my neighbors had known, and none of them knew, we canvassed for five hours, door to door, and no one knew this was happening. So I'm hoping Councilperson Kenyatta can let us know what was his process for naming the street after Patty, and I'm saying, thank you for doing that. But I'm also questioning, how come we didn't get the same respect and due process from Councilperson Curtis Jones? Thank you.
Linda Randolph. Commenting on 180832 and 170675.
I kind of wanted to follow up on that. I wanted to address Curtis Jones and ask him again, the community is asking him again to rescind this resolution that was passed. The claims at the ceremony that Wilson Good made that he will not be defined by just one day, just one regular old day in his life. He's not being defined by just one day. He's being defined by that day, the days after, the weeks after, the months and the years after that he refused to do anything about bringing the people responsible for that historical tragedy to justice. The person that dropped the bomb, the police officers that shot the children as they were trying to escape the fire, the people that let the fire burn, the whole community down, the whole block down, none of them. He did not have the guts or the courage to bring any of them to justice. The name Wilson Good is a disgrace. It's an embarrassment to this city. You cannot, at best, he was a coward. You can't erase history. You're just putting, you're going to put up a sign as an attempt to erase the history of what his name is connected to in this city. So, and I'm going to quote African-American woman years ago, right here, that said that we are making a moral plea to a man and to a city government that does not have a moral conscience. So if we have to continue to come here, if we have to continue to march and protest, we will do so until that sign comes down.
Jeanette Patton. Commenting on 170675.
Yes, I'm here for the third time speaking on that. And, you know, I'd like to address all the city council for the people who said, I didn't know, I didn't understand what was happening, it was a mistake. Well, I'm saying mistakes can be corrected. And Curtis Jones, Councilman Curtis Jones, attempted to rewrite history. And when he sent that resolution around, no one in here who said aye or yae, whatever it is, to pass it, and nowhere on it did it mention about the bombing. And that's very, very important. And also, I'm saying, it was written on a lie because if that was put in there, I would hope the moral of people who read it would have said, no, we can't do that. That's your friend, and he's more than likely a lot of people friends in here. But morally, there's no way that we can put up a sign and are saying Wilson Good's way when he's responsible for the murder of 11 men, women, and children burnt to death. These children, men and women, had ran out the house. They were shot in the alleyway. One child was fists up in the air, and arms shot off, and then thrown back, bodies thrown back into the building. This is another fact that was left out of here. But what I'm asking city council, because Mr. Jones told us that it can be rescinded, that city council members have the right to, you know, put in a resolution to have that rescinded. But what he said, if you did, then what he would do is oppose it. So what I'm asking people, anybody in city council, do you have the nerve to stand up and do the right thing? Already, it has been a split in the city behind a situation that Curtis Jones has started. I'm saying we need to, my sister Ngoza, who's a very well-respected person, almost got locked up last week at the ceremony. And, you know, Mr. Good said he didn't ask for this, but being that you, Curtis, put it in, and he said you, the rest of the city council voted on it, then, you know, he's not going to disappoint you all. To hell with us, right? The babies that was murdered, the men and women that was murdered, the loss of the Osage Avenue, not even to mention people who had dogs and cats and birds that was burnt, that was burnt to death. And, you know, and wait a minute, I noticed that, oh, there you are, Mr. Clark. And, you know, we would really like to have a meeting with you all because this city is going up in the turmoil. This is going around the world. We'd like to bring closure to this, but it only can be done by doing the right thing. On the move, thank you, long live John Africa.
Bianca Parker. Commenting on 180100.
Hello, my name is Bianca Parker, and I'm a resident. And I want to say no. Excuse me. Hello, my name is Bianca Parker, and I'm a resident. And I want to say no and urge council members to reject and do not allow the passage of Bill Number 180100, which will authorize the furtherance of predatory encroachment of Temple University's campus and footprint. Extend spend district, building of a research facility and expansion of Temple Police Surveillance, and subject our African-American children to racial experiments. Camera surveillance is a common research method utilized in studies. Just as the Tuskegee Experiment exploited African-Americans for scholarly and scientific gain, Temple University plans the Alpha Center for research of North Philadelphia African-American preschool children. This plan competes with existing area daycares. Temple failed four schools during five years of a school district funding contract. Young African-American children will be subject to mental health treatment and study. As staff ungraded, as staff ungraded, Temple University students would be treatment providers at the Psychology Clinic. Patients of Temple University Psychology Clinic would be subject to research studies. Temple must abandon plans for this experiment center that they call Alpha Center. They must abandon plans to subject African-American children and African-American adults to research studies. And Temple must abandon plans for dental clinic that already exists. Again, I'm going to voice my opposition to this travesty, and I'm going to speak up and out against Temple. And I want council members to vote no to early learning research and mental health labeling of African-American preschool age children in North Philadelphia. Also, I want to say that I was at this known community meeting on this Tuesday, and myself spoken, and it was opposed to this experiment center. And everyone there, the community members, also was opposed to it as well. So if the community members don't want it, then they don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Jacqueline Wiggins. Commenting on 180100.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, city council members. Can you hear me? Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Jacqueline Wiggins. I am a long-term resident in North Central Philadelphia, also committee person, 32nd Ward, 11th Division. Bill 180100, having to do with Temple University wanting to amend its zoning map to build a structure called the Alpha Center is what I am speaking to. Finally, as the previous speaker said, a known community meeting was held at Penrose Recreation Center, 11th and Susquehanna, this past Tuesday. Here are a few words that I heard at that meeting. Why build this thing at 13th Street? No more encroachment, Temple. Temple never fulfilled the charrette agreement. That building will be for Temple in the end. This was a quiet neighborhood until the students came. Take that center back to campus where there is land. Take that center to Broad and Diamond. The people who were there were more than upset, concerned, or agitated. They were unabashedly outspoken that they do not want this center there. And the fact that other programs that already exist somehow were added on to what was to be programs in the center when at first were just three was really amazing. And so, once again, I'm asking city council members, if you would please pay close attention to what is going on. We have a right to be notified about what is going on in our community. We have every right to know what's going on in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment session. We will now consider bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180832.
A resolution also naming the 2300 block of Ellsworth Street, Patty Jackson Way, to honor broadcasting pioneer and Philadelphia living legend Patty Jackson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180832 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180295AA.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending the one-year rule, modifying certain public notice requirements, and making related changes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 180295-AA. A copy of the amendment was circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 180295AA has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker. Set an amendment. 180498AA.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to provide for the procedures for the administrative review process.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 180498- I would like to offer an amendment to Bill number one eight zero four nine eight AA. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The amendment to Bill number one eight oh four ninety-eight has double A, has been approved. Bill one eight oh four ninety-eight double A as amended will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, one seven oh six seventy-eight double A.
An ordinance amending Title seven of the Philadelphia Code entitled Housing Code by adding a new Chapter seven two hundred entitled Mixed Income Housing Program to provide for affordable housing standards, amending Section fourteen seven oh two of the Philadelphia Code entitled Mixed Income Housing to make related changes, amending Chapters fourteen six hundred and fourteen seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled respectively Use Regulations and Development Standards to amend certain zoning standards relating to residential development.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill one seven zero six seven eight double A. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The amendment to one seven oh six seventy-eight double A has been approved. One seven oh six seven eight double A will be on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker. One six oh one fifty-one.
An ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code by adding a new provision authorizing the City of Philadelphia to issue municipal identification cards to city residents, establishing standards, confidentiality provisions, and other related items regarding the cards.
This bill has been heard two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neill. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunnerne Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fourteen, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Aging to hold public hearings to examine emergency protocols that ensure the safety of senior citizens residing in traditional community high-rises, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. I move for the adoption, Mr. President.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. Think you were out for the last vote.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I wish to be recorded as voting aye on our bills and resolutions.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that that vote on the last bill was fifteen zero. Thank you.
And a resolution recognizing October two thousand eighteen as Manufacturing Month and further honoring Weber Display and Packaging for their more than one hundred twenty years of dedication to the manufacturing industry in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution has been adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Crystal Tan, Amen Brown, Carl Hairston, Gail Young, Lisette Gonzalez, and Felicia Miller for springing to the aid of hundreds of senior citizens by providing food, water, and emergency assistance during the Pavilion Department's power outage on September fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings examining the feasibility of expanding the services of the Community Life Improvement Program, CLIP, and establishing CLIP offices citywide, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, just briefly, Council President, you know, my sole purpose for introducing this legislation, because I think CLIP is a very needed program here in the City of Philadelphia. We know, all know how the program was established in its primary gate toward northeast Philadelphia. But however, we want to make sure that the City of Philadelphia as a whole have the same type of manpower and resources to improve the quality of life of our neighborhoods. So I wholeheartedly call for the adoption of this resolution, Council President.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings regarding the operation of Philadelphia's three-one-one non-emergency hotline, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair can recognize Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, the sole purpose of me introducing this legislation was based upon me gauging the residents throughout the second councilmatic district on quality of life issues, and when it comes to three-one-one being a data-driven process for our constituents to call to get the issues addressed, we've received numerous of calls regarding the glitches and making sure that what's being reported is actually completed. And so, we want to examine three-one-one for its effectiveness and make sure that we're doing the best as a city to address the issues and needs of our constituents. I move the adoption of this resolution, Council President.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating Nelson Diaz on the release of his new book entitled Not From Here, Not From There, No Soy De Aquí Ni De Allá, the autobiography of Nelson Diaz, and recognizing Nelson for his continued contributions to the Philadelphia community, introduced by Councilwoman Gunnerne Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the honorees of the two thousand eighteen Stellar Startups Competition, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in propriety. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to call attention to my colleagues and to the city at large, that the farm in the city, which was a farm that was right across the street from City Hall, it is in the shadow of the Municipal Services Building, produced over seventeen hundred pounds of produce, which was given to the homeless through the Broad Street Ministries. Today is one of their final days. They are giving away extra plants. They are also soil testing by the EPA, and it was under the sponsorship of the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society. I commend them on a job well done. I thank them, and I would urge anyone that's in Philadelphia to stop by and pick up a free plant if they'd like to do that. Council President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Tomorrow at Southwest Singer, tomorrow at Southwest Singer Center, we will hosting our annual Senior Citizens Health Fair from eleven AM to two PM. It's an opportunity for us to come out and engage our singers to help improve their mind, body, and spirit, and so just want to acknowledge the event that we're doing tomorrow as relates to outreach in southwest Philadelphia part of my district. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to remind folks and thank all my council colleagues who annually join us for the, what would be the fifty-seventh annual Puerto Rican Day Parade this Sunday at twelve, twelve noon on the Parkway. I want to thank everyone who's supported us in the past and welcome them this year. And then at three o'clock, we host our annual Boriqua Fest along with the city and the police department. It's part of our Be Safe, Be Proud campaign that we started many years ago. It's only fitting that this week, and today in particular, we finally passed the municipal ID program. I want to thank the administration, Mayor Kenny, who worked with me on this prior to becoming mayor as a councilperson, and was a tremendous ally. An ID should not be a barrier for anyone to access their city government, and it is our hope that it will not only become the official identification of our city workforce, but that every community, particularly vulnerable communities, people leaving prison and others, have access to identification that will help them re-enter into our society. So I want to recognize all of the stakeholders who worked with us, the mayor's team, and everyone, and look forward to the implementation. It will have a reporting requirement back to city council, an oversight committee to ensure that we're implementing this completely correctly and ensuring that we develop efficiencies around the establishment of what should be a prideful municipal ID program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind colleagues that we'll be having a briefing this afternoon in the caucus room. As many people know, the City of Philadelphia is a part of the Pennsylvania Municipal League. One of the Pennsylvania Municipal League partners is NJM Insurance Group. They will be providing lunch this afternoon. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches on behalf of the majority and minority, and that chair now recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, October fourth, two thousand eighteen, at ten AM.
Thank you. It has been moved in propriety. Second, that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, October fourth, two thousand eighteen, ten AM. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, thank you all very much.